Hello, hello, Aldwin Alterney here. I am at Hota, home of the arts, and just across the road is the Gold Coast City Council Bundle Chambers. And today, they have a meeting to decide on what is going to happen to the last 20% of the lake that council has not filled in with dirt, apparently to create a car park. It's been a long campaign and council have promised that they were not going to fill in the rest of the lake. In fact, all the councillors other than Tom Tate actually voted against filling in the last 20% of the lake, where there's still a lot of wildlife, swans, animals, et cetera. And now it is back on the agenda. Not just is it back on the agenda, but they're discussing it at a closed council meeting. And I just want to show you exactly what I'm talking about on a computer right here. I'm with some of the people from Wildlife Queensland. And this is what we can see. Now, these are our councillors that we're paying out of our rates, that the Gold Coast is paying for, and they're having a closed meeting to discuss this. I think it's disgusting. Anyway, let's just have a look at this. And there it is, council meeting in closed session right now. Closed session, yes, that's right. Now, we are socially distancing here, of course, according to the rules, right? The rules of the game currently with this plandemic that's going on. Anyway, we are here right now with the amazing Sally Spain, who is president of the Wildlife Queensland, Gold Coast and Hinterland branch. And also, we have Michael Luce, who's here from Brisbane. He's come down to the Gold Coast. He's the vice president of the whole of Queensland, of Wildlife Queensland. So let's start with you, Michael. Thank you so much for coming, all the way from Brisbane to be with us today. Now, how do you feel about what's going on here today?
Well, Aldwin, thank you very much for your, for the opportunity. I'm also the chair of the Wildlife Australia magazine. So we get a lot of feedback by subscribers to Wildlife Australia magazine about local governments and state governments are protecting small wildlife habitats such as Black Swan Lake. And that the incremental benefits of protecting smaller spaces across a local government area or many local government areas is the aspiration of many of the house subscribers to the Wildlife Australia magazine.
How many subscribers have you got of Wildlife Australia magazine?
Probably about two and a half thousand.
Wonderful, two and a half thousand, brilliant. Now, you actually saw the lake being filled in as well, is that correct?
That's right. And just as an observer and my background in environmental planning, environmental management was, I just was rather concerned about the rushed approach. There didn't seem to be due care taken and the site supervision just wasn't apparent. While the humans, you know, the people who were concerned were separated from the site, the wildlife hadn't been collected. There was no, no plan in evident about good practices in collecting wildlife, doing a site survey, doing proper site supervision, and just doing a pilot to see what impacts might be. It was just really very rushed.
It was very rushed. And then the whole public was left out of that area as well. It was all fenced off. And now, how many different species of birds? It was 2.7 hectare lake, right? Now, how many exact species of birds and wildlife do we have there?
Well, I believe now through Birds Queensland, the Gold Coast branch have just recently identified another five. So there's now 70 species of birds done, you know, using a proper methodology. So 70 species in a little habitat is important. That means there isn't other habitats around. Or if they are, are they being protected? So that site is important. It could be a stepping stone to a more key site, you know, like a better-conditioned site. Or it could be the only site that's available for some of the species. And suddenly, they just have to flock there because all of their other habitats have been taken away from them.
Amazing. So what was the Wildlife Queensland reaction when they heard that council wanted to fill in the lake and make it a car park?
Well, first of all, we thought that the good work by Sally Spain and the members and the supporters was excellent because they brought the issue to the front. The concern was the indifference by some of the elected representatives. You know, like we had scanned the papers. There was very little comment by elected representatives, more by the community there and by members. So we were rather concerned about the indifference.
Yeah, it's been a big fight, hasn't it? It's been a longstanding campaign now. Do you know much of the history? Or would it be better to chat with Sally about that?
No, I think Sally is articulate in this area. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Michael. Any final words before I chat with Sally here?
No, just wanted to, at the very moment, what are called the Sivcada Awards. These are all films about wildlife by primary school and high school students, mostly in the Brelandons area. And they like to go out and to talk about, from, you know, a young, young person's perspective, the importance of protecting habitats for wildlife. So I'm sure that the next generational voters that are in this area, in the Gold Coast area, will be looking over the shoulders of their parents and going, well, we need to do some action. We need to take some action. We need to protect not just Black Swan Lake, but other small habitat areas in the Gold Coast.
Absolutely. And that involves a lot more people actually standing up and speaking up. What are some things people can do watching this live right now?
They could probably just have a look at the interview between yourself and Sally most recently. Talk to council about their local councillor about whatever decision has been made. Look at the Wildlife Queensland, Gold Coast newsletters and have a look at how this issue has transpired over time. Seeing that council has, except for the elected mayor, have previously unified in wanting to protect the site. But seeing now, post-elections, not to be so interested. So explain to the councillor that maybe they supported them last time because of that reason. And their decision may be based again on how they respect the environment themselves during the next three, four years.
Yes, yeah, fantastic, great advice there. Thank you so much, Michael. And you're heading back to Brisbane shortly. Thank you so much for coming down here to the Gold Coast today to be with us and to say your bit on what's going on. Thank you so much. All right, we'll have a chat with Sally Spain in just a moment. So that was Michael Luce. He's the vice president of Wildlife Queensland for the whole state. He's come down from Brisbane today. There's been a gathering here today. A few people, a few select people, who are very concerned about what is happening with Black Swan Lake. And if you don't know about it, then Google it. Black Swan Lake, it's been something that's been on the agenda for a long time now, where council have been wanting to fill the car park, fill it in and fill the whole lake in. Beautiful 2.7 hectare lake with now 70 species of animals, of birds, et cetera. 70 species, and I think some quite endangered, is that right? Some quite endangered as well. We'll have a chat with Sally about that in just a moment. And now, it's back on the agenda to actually fill in the last 20% of the lake. So 80% is now filled in with dirt. And it is alleged that some animals have been buried alive in that field because basically they just put dirt straight over the, straight over the lake. And there were turtles in there, there was fish, there was all sorts of animals in there. And then afterwards, there was like, you know, broken turtle shells that were found. You know, it's quite disgusting what's happened. Anyway, let's go over to Sally Spain now. She is the president of Wildlife Queensland, Gold Coast and Hinterland branch. Hello, Sally, great to see you.
Thank you so much for giving this exposure. We really have reached a crunch point today. There'll be two courses taken. One is that the council will ensure that the turf club and the wider community are benefited by keeping this 20%. The other will be that horrible scenario which discussed with so many people will occur again, and there will be a public reaction. Those trucks coming up, filling day after day, the distress of the community. That was horrendous, it was widespread. We know that media have been attracted to this story. We considered Wildlife Queensland, the issue was closed with the move in the direction of preserving the last 20% of the lake. That was signaled via council in 2019 prior to the election. We will be holding people to account if this destruction reoccurs because although some substitute idea of re-establishing a wetland, perhaps over the next half-century, which it took to actually have this extraordinary site evolve, is being touted. We consider that to be a feeble gesture in terms of the fact that in wildlife and ecological values, the site is priceless. In terms of monetary values, the car parking facility and the horse grazing facility would be one of the most expensive pieces of horse grazing and car parking in Queensland, possibly Australia. With estimates vary from six or seven million to 12 million, I've been quoted. The actual community-owned, it seems strange, but community-owned horse training establishment, which would be part of the least benefit for the turf club as proposed, plus the control of the huge 10 acres of grassed parkland which belongs to us under lease, as we understand it, would be an enormous monetary value. In return for this, the turf club, who found themselves able to find the monetary means to fill 80% of the lake and have the security and the fencing and all the other entailed studies that are finally produced, now find themselves, it seems, unable to maintain the 20%. We think that addressing the nutrient runoff, which they find difficult to manage, really carefully addressing what comes from the equine precinct into the 20%, would vastly lower the extraordinary estimates of costs which have been said to maintain a one-acre lake. They'd be seen beyond any comprehensible estimate to us. And we haven't got the details of those figures that have been touted. In return, the turf club are going to give us for this habitat, which is surrounded by botanically assessed locally valuable bushland, they are going to give us, they say, $125,000 worth of establishment, establishing a wetland, which is an extraordinarily difficult thing to do and certainly could never be of equal value to even the one acre left of the marvelous 7A, the site which was unique. We advocated that the turf club should use that site as a feature of the events equine precinct, but they have not done so. Nevertheless, the one acre would still be a feature when the royal family visit the horse racing precinct. They are protectors of the swans, we understand. It is far, far more grave if the situation occurs that council does not ensure that this lease agreement is predicated upon preserving the lake. That pretty well is where it stands at the moment, Aldwin. And we will know possibly by this afternoon or tonight. Although in closed session, and sadly, the Gold Coast City Council has many, many closed sessions, more we've noticed than most other councils in Queensland. But nevertheless, we will know what the decision is. We may not know what rational logic was to bear upon it, but we do know that this is something that was a community possession, first given away a dollar a year licence and then passed on in this sense to a lease agreement, which is of higher value to the potential, they see. The site is of higher value to the community. It was postulated that sharing should occur, sharing definitely should occur at this stage. Thank you, Aldwin, for all of this time to get this message out.
Well, thank you for the great work you do. Now, there's a lot of animals still with the remaining 20%. There's a lot of swans, et cetera. They're still gathering in that area. What kind of animals have been sighted there?
The kinds of bird life that we see in the Gold Coast, but in prolific numbers. People have said there are lots of waterways on the Gold Coast. But as you know, when many of them are intruded upon by activity, by housing, they have very little sheltering vegetation. And so although some in the community say there's lots of places, many of them are being subject to human, many of them are being lost. No council record of open space purchase to restore or maintain or keep our habitat, sorry, to keep our habitat, preserve, if you like, for the last eight or nine years. So this particularly valuable site is not something that you can sell and sell lots of water everywhere. Because there are different kinds of water in the city in terms of water habitat and different kinds of sheltering vegetation. And as our state vice president has intimated, birds tend to flock to where it's safe, and it is relatively isolated for domestic pets in that precinct, where it is sheltered from predation, other bigger birds and so on, but also in the canals, bull sharks, et cetera. So that is, it is not an argument, although it's been put, to say, oh, we have lots of places to leave. It is quite clear in Australia's species extinction crisis that something as valuable as this, that was narrowly missing out on being listed for Commonwealth protection, is not something that should ever have been trashed. And certainly, any increase in destruction would obviously lead us to campaign retrospectively for restoration of this. Not some feeble effort at establishing a habitat, but staying in the area which is botanically invaluable, is sheltered, and which would be subject to excavation as easily and as swiftly as it was infilled to the disgust and disgrace, in our opinion.
And actual types of birds? Do you know any specific types of birds that have been found there?
Well, there are multitudes, royal spoonbills, egrets. But the more rare birds that have been sighted also. If people go to the South East Queensland site, they will see a gradual scientific observation taken and the bird counts which were done on site to make sure that these incredibly beautiful creatures of such variety were noted. So the bird council also looked at numbers, numbers of the species as well as the types of species. And the amazing fact that we have there, as has been cited before, I think in two U, we have a seventh of Australia's, 70 out of 828 of Australia's known species. I think it's about a sixth of what's been recorded at Kakadu. I might have that slightly wrong. But in any case, an extraordinary number for a small site. What is of concern is that some councillors who spoke for this originally, councillors, I think councillors Brewster, Gates and Corwell spoke in 2016 supporting the infill. But later in 2019, the supermajority of councillors, all 14 of them, went to election with the public fairly aware and certainly consent from us that an agreeable solution had been found in the 20% at least of this area, which is really large in terms of some water features and botanical gardens, would be preserved. The councillors who defended it, and we're hoping, I was continuing to do so on this very day, councillor Petrie Young, councillor Boblo Castro, councillor Daphne McDonald, and certainly the new councillors who have come in, probably don't want to have their names associated with what were many considered to be a total fiasco. So we are hoping that some sensible solution takes into account the fact that the council feel obligated, no doubt, to the turf club because they get some parking there. But that obligation doesn't mean that they should reconsider places like the Bruce Bishop Car Park, which was a public facility, if council officers need to be accommodated there. There are means to negotiate these things. They can also look at the lease terms and see whether perhaps the turf club can realise that their lease conditions are 30 years for a vastly valuable community property potentially at reasonable rents. That isn't just a given out of the community benefit, as it were. The community itself have spent enormous sums of money on this. People have paid for trucks to be deflected, as I think I've told you. Trucks are fully taken elsewhere. People have devoted their time and their professional qualifications to showing the scientific studies which prove the lake. Aldwin, there is, because it's been six years, you know that I'm giving you a spate of information that has been accrued by many people over six years. But today, we hope that this long saga, even though the black swans have no flight path on the lake because they need more space, they do come to the lake. They do cross from waterways and walk across to the lake because it's of value to them. But all the other species that you have mentioned that dwell there, we hope today that they have at least a safe haven and is valuable for them, not some shadowy proposition of a re-establishment of what we already have.
And what do you say to anyone who says that the lake is not clean or not habitable?
Well, as we said prior, there were three water quality studies done by government laboratory, which showed that the water quality was safe, suitable for wildlife. But the equine precinct itself has, we feel, contributed by some runoff practice which could be improved to the lake. And if the smaller size of the lake has meant that this has more intensity, then obviously the solution is in the equine precinct's hands. And as we have mentioned before, the Narrang River system, and we believe that the people who have been monitoring that area have written to council concerned about that. The Narrang River system will be exposed to an equine precinct in an urban area and the runoff that occurs there. So we feel that these things can be ameliorated by best practice. We have mentioned prior that natural vegetation remedies have scientifically approved, are scientifically credible remedies have been put in place. There's talk of the fact that this lake would be extremely expensive to maintain. But we figure that, we feel that amelioration of any circumstances that make it a little more difficult and the due care would ameliorate that circumstance.
So how hopeful are you today of a positive outcome here at council today?
We really have no idea of the machinations of council. It is a mystery to many people in the city. We do hope that the goodwill that was accrued at the election of the councillors and the fact that the Aqua Turf Club is a local entity, just as we are, long established, will bring some rational sharing to this very, very vexed issue, Aldwin. That is our hope. And I think our state offices from Wildlife Queensland have watched with interest this campaign. It is very much a hallmark of much wider issues. As you know, there's talk of filling in Norton Bay, filling in a Burbank grapefruit site for buildings. I know that in places like Hong Kong, they have little chance but to fill in their water in many ways to get buildings. We in Queensland contemplating the destruction of a international treaty that protects the bird life, which is becoming so rare on our planet as species, matriculating its species goes on. We find that extraordinary. And I know that our head office has given us great support. And they were very much behind the successful save Black Swan Lake in Brisbane, which stopped in the precinct the ashvelting of a very, very valuable lake, which now exists at the benefit of the community. We hope that this reason can take place at this stage in the campaign.
We have hope. And in the meantime, what can people do who are watching this?
Well, we will definitely be reacting very strongly as a Wildlife Queensland group if any impairment is made of the remaining refuge for prolific numbers of species. We've been on site most of the time with our representatives since the decision and indeed throughout the whole campaign. We have had our office bearers have planted trees there. We have had people monitoring and noting the bird life there. And there will definitely be a reaction. And we feel there'll be a reaction from the community because this is, after all, their possession. It is their land that has been first secured for a dollar a year licence and later on, postulated for further infill. So we are, we are really with the response the communities have over the years. We are very certain that there would be an outbreak of real abhorrence if this isn't solved, as we all presume that to a certain extent, if it was.
Thank you so much, Sally. Any final words before I say a few more words?
Thank you, Aldwin. I think we're just very grateful to the social media because although we've had support from the local media, it is very much the coming thing. And we ask people to share this interview as much as they possibly can, knowing that we are a voluntary organisation. We owe no debt of gratitude in terms of monetary to any organisation. We speak freely for the concerns of wildlife, as do our headquarters. We don't have any obligation to do other than speak for those who are voiceless. And we know the community have aided us in this so much in the past. Many of them are battle weary, but I know, like true Australians, they will still stand up for the Australia that we value, which is, it's flora and the black swans that fly freely in our skies. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. And how can people best support Wildlife Queensland for both of you? Socially distancing here, in case anyone's wondering. Here we are, hopefully that's a good two metres or so. How can people support both of you here with Wildlife Queensland? Over to you, Michael.
Well, the thing that we found when we did the Black Swan Lake initiative, that was based at the port of Brisbane, the site was already an offset site. And that meant that we'd agreed, the community agreed in principle to development on the site, and the offset was late. Well, in that particular circumstance, they were going to fill in that lake also. And we said, if you have, if you want to offset another offset, the people will just come out and stop the process, you know, like stop your development. Somehow, they found, in no time at all, authority, found another site for their car park. They didn't fill in because of the anxiety of people had already kind of compromised by saying, okay, we'll allow development to occur as long as you have an offset. But now you're telling us you're about to fill in the offset. You know, doesn't your word make any difference? So suddenly, community groups from everywhere came. And so while, you know, the Gold Coast is the sixth largest city in Australia, and there are a lot of people supporting the Gold Coast branch, people from other branches across Queensland, our benefactors, you know, like a lot of people who contribute, will contribute to making sure that due processes follow in this decision and others, you know, throughout the Queensland. So what we would like people to do is just keep an eye on the decision-making processes, how sites have, you know, done. Things do keep being improving in some environmental ways, but not so much in the conservation ways where you thought that you had wins. So just keep being aware of protecting wildlife in your local area and within your local government area and also within the natural areas.
Great. And Wildlife Queensland Facebook page, website?
It's here, it's wildlife.org.au.
Wildlife.org.au, wonderful. Thank you so much, Michael. Any final words, Michael or Sally, from Wildlife Queensland?
I think we've probably lived in the community now. They will know how to respond, either knowing that something has been saved on this long haul, but they did, or taking action further if it's not.
Thank you so much, Sally. Thank you, Michael. And thank you also to everyone who's been supporting this campaign to save Black Swan Lake as well. Hello, Hayley. Hayley's saying this is so sad. Absolutely, Hayley, it is actually not just sad, it's actually quite unbelievable. It defeats all logic. It is just insane. And that is why so many people are up in arms about it. And that is why so many people are up in arms about it on the Gold Coast and have been fighting to save the lake for so long, six years this battle's been going on. Council have made promises, reneged on promises, made promises, reneged on promises. You wonder why people have trust issues, right? You wonder. You wonder why we don't trust politicians. So let's just see what happens in the closed council meeting today. And as Sally said, Gold Coast City Council has more closed meetings than a lot of other places around Australia. And here they are again in another closed meeting. So we can't actually see what they're discussing about Black Swan Lake, but we do know on the agenda they do want to fill in the remaining twenty percent. They've already filled in eighty percent of the two point seven hectare beautiful area with seventy different species of birds and animals, some in, some endangered, some very rare species. And uh and this is, this is our Gold Coast City Council for you. And Anne, Anne Crawford, thank you for your comment there. I was at the lake over the past weekend. Wildlife is bustling. There you go, Anne. Even in the remaining twenty percent, wildlife is bustling. Cannot understand how this area can be touted as toxic or an unsuitable habitat. And if it really was toxic or unsuitable, surely the animals would know that, wouldn't they? And they wouldn't be there. If it was really that toxic, what are the animals doing there? And the fact is, if they go over to the saltwater canals, there are sharks in there and it is not safe for them. Okay, so time to wake up Gold Coast. I just want to also share Lyn Santa's comments to me this morning. Lyn, thank you. Lyn says, save the lake, save the environment for the rate-paying residents who pay the councillors' wages and who want the lake to remain. Save the lake for the wildlife whose lives are in our hands. If we allow the money-grabbing developers to concret their home in a culpable act of murder for the ornithological reptilian and other native species who depend on this lake. Save the lake because it was an election promise broken in two thousand and sixteen and about to be broken again potentially. Save the lake because all the councillors, except our mayor, voted to save what remains in their last vote. Save the lake because it is the decent and correct thing to do. Absolutely, Lyn, so well said. Thank you so much to everyone who has been behind this, who's been making a stand, speaking up for the environment of the Gold Coast, uh speaking up for the animals which cannot speak up for themselves. Thank you for all you do. And now it's a waiting game to see how we're going to go in this closed meeting. What are they going to decide, our councillors? What will they decide on the last twenty percent of the lake? And we will be waiting and we will be preparing our response to whatever they come out with because the fact this is even on the agenda again is insane. And uh it's just a waste of everyone's time and it's time that we moved on to more important issues, I would say, uh once this is done because we're all sick of, uh sick of this fiasco that's happening with council. I think people have had enough of the, not just the COVID plandemic and all the craziness around that, but actually Gold Coast City Council plandemic that is happening right here as well. So you make up your own mind, you do your own research, look up save Black Swan Lake. There's a, a whole lot of people who've been campaigning. Tammy Hogan, well done for your great work and for all the great people who've been standing for this. Thank you so much for the work you do and please, if you're moved in any way, there's lots of different ways you can help. There's lots of groups on Facebook. Support Wildlife Queensland, doing an amazing job as well. And thank you for watching this. If you like what you see, please pop your comments in the chat, share this video, get the word out. A lot of people still don't know about what has happened with Black Swan Lake here on the Gold Coast. In fact, it is unbelievable. The fact is though, it is, it is true. Council have already filled in eighty percent of the lake, sand, dirt, straight into the, straight into the lake where there were animals, turtles, et cetera, straight over the top. Uh it's disgusting and it's time that we stood up and make the difference that we are here to make as the community of the Gold Coast. It's time that we spoke up and it's time that we held our councillors accountable. I'm Aldwin Altonay, Media Queen, signing out for today. Thank you so much for joining us and please share the love and do your bit to make a difference. Thank you so much. Thank you, Sally and Michael. Thank you, Tammy and everyone who's fighting for this, and Lyn and Anne and Hayley. Thank you so much to all of you. Lots of love to you and we'll see you again soon. Bye for now.